Hit your microphone.
Hey, I turn on my microphone. I'd like to call this planning commission work session to order for Thursday, February 6, 2006. My name is Carl Johnson and I am the chairman of the Clark County Planning Commission. Before I begin tonight, I would like to announce that our planning commission work sessions are hybrid, both in person and via WebEx. For the virtual in-person and planning commission staff, please ensure that your microphones are turned off and muted unless you are speaking. There will not be any public comment during the work session, but members of the public can watch or listen. This evening's agenda is as follows. Really quickly, Oliver, Jose is the plan update. Then we have the community framework plan. We have the comp plan policy on schools, chapter 10, comp plan policy on annexation, chapter 12, the comp plan policy on shoreline master program, chapter 13. And then, of course, if there's any comments from members of the planning commission, we'll finish that off. So with that said, Oliver, Jose, you are up.
Okay. Good evening. Planning Commission chair, members of the planning commission for the record, Oliver, our community planning director. And with me here, our staff, Jose Alvarez, our land use program manager. And we have Amy Woodin also in community planning. And we have our legal counsel, Ms. Chris Cook. So we are here to provide you an update of the 2025 comprehensive plan update. And followed by three or four comp plan texts that we are beginning to bring before you. There about, I don't know off the top of my head, but there are about 14 or 15 chapters of the plan document. When you were appointed, I think we made a provision of the comp plan text to you. So you should have a copy of that. Also, we refer you to Title 40, which is the unified development code of the county. The comprehensive plan element, there are some elements that are mandated. In other words, we are required as one of the largest county along the I-5 corridor who are supposed to be fully planning under the GMA. There are mandated elements that are chapters we have to have in our comp plan document. There are some elements or chapters that are optional. For example, school is optional. Because we have a very good working relationship with all the school district in Clark County, we decided to accept school chapter in coordination with representative of the school district. We also have a school advisory board or a school advisory committee. So their input is well incorporated and represented as we do the plan update. Primarily in relationship to land use affect our schools. And we want to coordinate and cooperate with them as we do the plan update. And of course, you see their capital facilities chapter during, when they are required to update them with the associated schooling fees. And with that, let me just go to our PowerPoint presentation this evening and provide you just a very quick update as to where we are before we get to the chapters. So if we can go to the next slide, please. So this evening, planning commissioners, we will start with comp plan update, the progress to date. Some of this information you may have seen before. I will provide you an overview of the schedule, where we are. And then we'll get into the goals and policies review. Next slide, please. And this evening, as we said, and the chair acknowledged, we will be going over the framework plan, the school chapter, the shoreline, and I believe there's one more. Annexation, okay, thank you. So commissioners, this is the general phases of the plan update. You may have seen, not may, you have seen this before. But I just want quickly to let you know that these four phases, the checkmarks here are the policy decisions or decisions have already been made. And what we have already accomplished, I would say that it have taken us a very long time to get those checkmarks completed. We had a series of hearings with the planning, with the council before they chose the population to plan for. We also had a series of hearings with the council before they chose the employment forecast to plan for. But before we started the project initiation, we started with the council approving the public participation plan and the scope of work, which is the first thing we have the council approve. And that provides opportunity for a continuous public participation and engagement in the process. When I was having initial discussion with council and the public that this plan update, anytime we are doing the plan update, it takes about three years or more. And often people ask me, why does it take that long? And my response is that it's very complex. You know, you have now not 14, but 15 goals of the Act. The legislature recently added the requirement that we do the climate change. And if you read the bill, it's very complex. And you know, what can I say? All the goals are in conflict, if I may say so. But beyond that, we have, you know, stakeholders. And we work with the seven cities, if you include Woodland, that makes it eight. And we have other service providers that we coordinate with. We have Citron, we invite them to participate with us. We have the tribe that we have to coordinate with. And we have all the service providers in the county we have to coordinate with. So that's why it takes long. And it takes long also for the council to make a decision one way or the other, to give us direction on what to do. So you can see that we are in the circle box for comp plan texts. And what I will say about the element is that while we're studying this now, we want to give you an opportunity to start looking at this comp plan text or element and have the opportunity to ask us questions, reach out to me or to individual staff that are working on each chapter. Any question that you may have, we are more than willing to assist you to provide clarification and so forth. And we will also at some point make the texts all available to the public to review. What I can say is that any, what you have now is draft. They are subject to change, but I don't think they will change significantly when we get to the preferred plan. We are almost completing the second phase, which is shaping of the plan. We will now move very quickly into review and refinement. And when we go over the project timeline, you will see exact dates. We have outlined that if we follow that, we may be able to complete this plan in a timely fashion and submit it to the state. So we will be moving into refinement, review and refinement. And the council, with your last hearing, I believe, is when you made a recommendation on the alternative to be studied in the draft EIS. The council, we can get that after the meeting when we get into comments and so forth. The council did pretty much go along with your recommendation to include all the site specific requests. And also to conduct a resource study. I will brief you on that later after this. So with that, we are beginning to provide those alternative that included the NO Action, which is the existing comprehensive plan we are required by CIPR, which is the State Environmental Policy Act, to have a NO Action plan. So that is the, where we will be very soon. And we are looking at completing the DEIS by June. And the state law requires that we allow for 30 days comment period for the DEIS. There is opportunity, and I'm not going to say that in the past, there have been requests to provide additional time for the comment. The responsible CIPR official can grant that or may not grant that if it sees any reason not to do so. If we believe we received enough comment to move forward, I may not grant additional time for requests. We, what I can say is that when we had the six months extension by the legislature, we think we have enough time. We don't. We are now the second month of the year. If you recall, I was coming to you before and saying that we were supposed to complete the work on or before June 30, 2025. With the, you know, a lot of folks were saying, oh, you got six months, you got six months. Here we are. You know, we really don't have enough time. So when we get to the schedule, you can see firm dates that we have really put together to help us meet that statutory deadline. If we don't, we will be out of compliance. And I don't think the legislature will give us any additional time. We may ask, I don't think we're going to get it. But I don't want to work with all that is at stake with our local jurisdiction to be out of compliance. That's not our goal. We will move then into, after the DEIS and allowing 30 days for comment, we will be walking through you and all our local jurisdiction to get to the preferred. But the information from the DEIS will inform you. And this Ag study or resource study will also inform you in how we get to what the preferred plan will look like. And following the preferred plan, we will then do additional refinement to the comp plan text if it's necessary based on that preferred plan. And it is the preferred plan that the final EIS is done. After the final EIS is issued, that's when we start the hearing process, to be, to be honest with you. And that will take us into the adoption phase. And we are required to submit our plans and all the associated supporting documents to Commerce. This is statutory required timeline, which is calling for 60 days for us to submit all our documents to Commerce. And then we will, along that same line or during that same period, begin a hearing with the planning commission. Jose will go over the project timeline. But our goal, we have done this in the past, is likely to have a joint hearing between you and the council. What will happen is after that, the council will go away. You will deliberate separately and then make a recommendation to council. And they will have their own hearing to consider your recommendation. And then we'll move into the final adoption. Hopefully, you can see there that we have added on or before December 31, 2025. And will be done, hopefully. Next slide, please. As I indicated, Jose will go in depth about the project timeline. But I will just give you a quick overview if you can go to the next slide. This is what I was discussing earlier about statutory deadline. Again, we are required by statute, not my choice, but required by statute to complete this effort by on or before on means exactly, you know, you gotta walk backwards. Because we have 10-day delay, if you will, for the adopted ordinance by council to become effective. That is by count each other. We are supposed to do the 60-day comment or adoption notice to Commerce. And then the same, at the same time that we have the final EIS, we will begin the adoption process. And as I said earlier, we are required through CIPR to allow for 30 days comment period for when the DEIS is issued. And then, of course, our hearing before you and council, we are required to give 15-day notice before a hearing. Next slide, please. Now, we are going to go into the chapters. But before that, I would like Jose to go over the project timeline so that you see the tight schedule that we are working with before we get into the policies or the chapters.
Good evening, commissioners. Jose Alvarez, community planning. So the previous slide sort of showed those timelines, deadlines, the 60-day comment period. So in creating the schedule, we just kind of worked our way back from that December deadline. So I'll walk you through this. We're currently had a work session with council yesterday to go over the same material with the schedule. We'll be having some work sessions with them. As we go through, you'll see later that I've, this, this work session with you guys, February 6th, will run through November. What we're really working on now is with the consultant to do the draft DEIS, as Oliver mentioned, that is due June 1st with the 30-day comment period. Once that is completed, we'll begin the legislative process for selecting the preferred alternative. As Oliver mentioned, one of the things that came out of a December 6th hearing with council was they asked for a land, a study be done on resource lands, so that that could be considered. We issued an RFP for consultant to do that work. That went out last week. We're looking at getting response by February 19th. And that study needs to be completed in that June timeframe in order to help inform the planning commission and the council in the selection of the preferred alternative. So July and August is when we'll begin that. We'll have some work sessions in June, July. Hopefully, and the hearing July 31st, which is not the regular hearing date. So there's kind of making some modifications. And then having a council hearing in August with a couple of backup dates consecutively. We need to have that decision made by that timeline in order to complete that. Once the preferred alternative is completed, then we could begin work on the, the final EIS and the capital facilities plans. That work won't start until the preferred alternative is selected. And we'll be working with our agency partners, both internally and externally, utility providers, the various cities, other departments within the county. And then there on the bottom, the comp plan text and Clark County code updates, we're starting that with you all this evening, February, February through October, with a variety of work sessions on different topics. We are, some of the, you know, this evening, some of the chapters, some of the elements, we're not proposing many changes. A lot of it is going to be driven by the changes, the legislative changes that we're responding to, that we need to adopt either new policies to comply with state guidelines or law. And then the, you know, the biggest changes were climate and changes to the housing element where, where a lot of the legislation was impacting those chapters. Climate, we are working with two advisory committees. That work should be done probably the end of March to come out with a recommendation. And for your, your consideration, we're working through, there may be changes to a multitude of chapters that come out of that, primarily transportation, land use, maybe housing as well. So we're working through to see where some of those changes will land, if they're going to be both in the new climate element and some of the other chapters. So just to let you know, there's going to be a definitely more policy work ahead. And we're kind of starting with the low hanging fruit. And then we'll get into more, more meat of substance issues. Can you move that up? So let's see, the October 15th is the, really the crux deadline for both having the FEIS published and having all of the draft comprehensive plan text changes and code changes completed so that we can send that to Commerce. And then that will sort of start that, the legislative process on, on the adoption of the plan. So we'll be sending that to Commerce October 15th. And then beginning hearings, like Oliver mentioned, joint hearings between the planning commission and the council to sort of take public comment. We've got two hearings scheduled. And then, as Oliver said, the council will go away. We'll have another hearing for your deliberations. And then having a recommendation to take to council, we'll have a work session with them to apprise them of your recommendation and then start that hearing process. Any questions?
We will stop here and see if planning commissioners have any questions. The timeline, the only thing I would say is that you can see on this page and the previous page, it says dates subject to change. It's just cautionary, I don't want the change, the dates to change. But I just want to alert you that that says so. But I'm trying to stick to this schedule just to avoid any delay.
Carl Johnson, so I'm curious, do we have much wiggle room in this? Because it seems like this is what kind of happened last time. And I know we had a different situation, a different setup. But I'm always concerned that when we get down, because I counted back, I was just doing fuzzy math on where you're gonna, where we gotta kind of be done for all these things to take. And it's, it's literally like the end of August. I mean, kind of in that realm to where this, all this stuff starts, the 60-day EIS and the 60-day notice of adoption. So am I wrong that we don't have a lot? And maybe you answer it by saying, we might have to change some things.
Slim to none and more likely none.
This is Eldon. So previous to some other meetings we had, I think that they, as, as it relates to the climate and the resilience aspects of it, where, where they're going to come together with some goals, some policies related to that?
Yes.
Is that all going to be tied up into the climate study that's due at the end of March? Or?
So there's an advisory group that is essentially vetting those policies and goals. And there'll be, there'll be a recommendation that that group will make. And that's what you will be considering.
So, so when does that happen, that we will actually start seeing those?
After they're done with their process, so.
You know, so, okay, okay.
Yeah, you will see it is their recommendation that will come to you for your own consideration and hopefully a hearing towards the end. And the public as well will have opportunity to see what those policies look like. Some will be county-wide planning policies, because some cities are required to do the greenhouse sub-element, some cities are required to do the resilience. So there's going to be county-wide planning policies that all the cities also would have to agree to in terms of target and the process they will go through, meeting those. So those will be put in as a county-wide planning policies. And then any other policies or strategies, this, you know, typically when we have a tax force, we wait until that tax force is done. And then we come to you with their recommendations. You may agree or disagree or modify or whatever the case may be. And you will hear from the public what they think about it. So that's the process that we normally follow.
The only thing I'd add is if you want to get a head start, they do meet next door, so I can send you the hearing dates and, and all of the materials.
I might be interested in that if you, to me, there's going to be a lot of meat in those, those policies and stuff that they're going to come up with, the goals. And then one other question, you said the county council wanted to do the resource land study? That's something new that came up, right? So I didn't think that was part of the.
Correct.
What, why did council do that?
To be honest with you, when we were presenting the alternative as recommended by the cities, the cities of La Center, not to pick on them, but Richfield as well as Commerce, you know that we had site specific requests. This similar site specific request was also submitted to the cities for their consideration as they, you know, so those three cities. And then there was some requests that did not come to the county directly, site specific request, but went to the city of Barrow Ground, for example. They included another property that has resource designation in them. We made it clear to our local partners that that's going to be very problematic. But in any case, if that's the direction that they would like to grow, that they will have to be responsible for doing the necessary designation report. To be frank, majority, if not all, the cities did submit a report, what am I called, a designation report, because of the inclusion of the resource within their proposal bank road boundary. The size, all the site specific requests, which this board did recommend that the council include in the DEIS, they didn't?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Our council did that, but they did the testimony, they heard it from the public. There was some, what I may call a misunderstanding, because the press release that my department sent out, some are interpreting that we said we are going to consider all the site specific requests. That's not really what that means. What we are saying is submit your request before March 15th so that some of them may be considered. We did consider all the site specific required consideration, made a determination that some of them shouldn't move any further. And you all know that Plan Amendment, they canceled this suspend annual review until we completed the plan when the, the legislature moved the goalpost to another six months. That prolonged how long? That prolonged how long that suspension lasted. But in any case, when we went to the council hearing, upon hearing from the public and those that made the site specific requests, you all know that the reason we have so many, more than 138 is because it's all free. But the council directed that all the site specific be included. And some of them were resource to non-resource. And so there is also a provision in, in WAC, if I may say, that says that during the periodic review is when the county can also open up review of the resource designation. And maybe also consider de-designation. It's more complex, but that's what the council directed and the resolution that they adopted on January 28th solidified that direction. So that's why we have that study to be done.
Okay, I understand now why the resource land study was initiated then because of all the site-specific requests.
This is Jack Haroun. Just to kind of address the resource land studies, the reason why I had proposed it at our hearing that we include that as a recommendation to council is take like the city of La Center that was expanding their urban growth boundary. Most of their sites were resource land, meaning either agricultural, I think most is what it was. My understanding is that the case law precedent that currently off the some of the, the stuff that was put through Washington was they adopt that without a county-wide resource land study, it makes their annexation kind of moot. They have, in order for that land to be rezoned from ag to whatever commercial that they wanted it to, you have to have a county-wide, a county-wide study done, not just a site-specific study. So that was the, that was the driving impetus behind that. So in that, that since it affected the entire county and any resource land within that to be rezoned, needed a county-wide study. So it was, it was, you know, certainly my belief that the county should fund that because that's part of the, part of the process. The, my question is on the capital facilities plan. It seems like you guys are going to be on a really tight deadline for that because it seems like that's like a pretty big, without any pre-planning, I guess, is, am I, am I just kind of preaching the choir there as far as like it? Because my understanding is you guys have to come up with an entire plan of like what you're going to put in and how it's going to be funded in a timeline. Is that correct?
So there are, so we, for transportation is usually the, the biggest issue. We have a consultant that will be helping with that. So there's a 20-year capital facilities plan. At 20 years, it's more general, it's the sixth year that is the one that needs to be buttoned down.
Okay.
And so the, the Public Works Transportation updates their six-year capital facilities plan on an annual basis. So what's going to, adding an additional year is going to be as isn't, isn't going to be as time consuming as you, as you would think. It's more of the 20-year project list. And that kind of is driven by how much of an expansion there is. So that, that's really going to be the, kind of the driver.
Yeah, I was just thinking of the, some of the, the land that the, the county has proposed taken. I think in, in all of, all of the things, it's kind of the same, same area where the washstop property is and things like that. Up, up by Duluth, I think. That I know there's like no sewer up there. There's some different things. And so I didn't know if that was already in a capital facilities plan that's been updated or that's going to be something that's going to have to be added, right? Make those parcels viable.
Right. And so the, yeah, we will be in communication with the utilities. They, they'll see what the, the three alternatives are, but I don't think they'll be, they don't want to make the investment in doing analysis on all three alternatives until they know. And so that's, that gets to the point of the preferred being so important and what, what kicks off there. But they can get a general idea of where we're going.
And then so basically we're done in like October, it gets adopted. And then after adoption, there's, my understanding, there's an additional one or two month waiting period before it can be finalized for, for challenges? Or is it?
It depends.
How does that work if, if somebody has a bee in their bonnet and they don't like what was passed?
Okay. Is this on? Is that's better? Kind of. Chris Cook, Chief Civil Deputy Prosecuting Attorney. So what you're asking is a little bit about the timelines. So a, a good, solid final draft has to be ready on October 15th. Is that correct? It's not adopted until later. Yeah. Right. So there's 60 days and a 10-day buffer after it's adopted before the 31st of December because our ordinances don't take effect for 10 days. So then the, anybody who wants to appeal has 60 days to appeal.
And how, how likely, I guess in your experiences, do they get appealed?
Hundred percent.
Okay. And then what's the timeline typically for resolving those appeals?
Four to seven years.
So so we can have a finalized plan, everybody generally speaking is agreed outside of whoever's challenging it. And then that plan is 100% on hold for four to seven years? Is that how that works or is that?
No, that's, that's not quite how it works. When it's appealed, the folks who are concerned about it point out issues that they have with it. And those are the subjects of the argument in the appeal. Anything that's not an issue
is, is enacted.
Is good unless somehow there's a global, none of this works, it's all invalid, whatever thing, ruling, which I haven't seen. So hopefully I won't see it with this one. But there are absolutely some areas that might be, or actions that might be the subject of an appeal that might not be resolved for that entire time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, just a caveat. If I then mention that, I think it will be a disservice to the Planning Commissioner and to the public. The legislature have changed and introduced a new bill that upon adoption of the plan, if challenged. I think that new bill in a sense says something like no annexation and no vesting on resource land brought into the U G B. That's how I read that. And you can correct me, Chris. But that new bill came out of the practice here in Clark County relating to the comment you made, Planning Commissioner Haroun. But I'll let Chris speak to that bill if I'm miss, if I misspoke.
Yeah, that's not a bill, that's a law. It was passed. So it is, it is in effect. So I am looking to pull that up on my computer now so that I don't misspeak. And yeah, the practice of de-designating resource land and then instantly annexing it and saying, well, you can't tell the county what to do with it because it's not in the county anymore. And the city isn't going to do anything with it. So there. So that did not go over well legislators or others. But there it was until the law was changed. And now the law has been changed. So looking for, do we know where that went? Effective date, here we go. It's 3678067. So the initial effective date of an action that expands an urban growth area removes the designation of ag forest or mineral resource lands, creates or expands a lammard, which in Clark County, we call rural centers. Let's see, establishes a new fully contained community under some other statutory thing that we don't do. Or creates or expands a master planned resort, which we've also never done. So the initial effective date is after the latest of the following. Number one, 60 days after the date of publishing, publication of notice of adoption of the plan, whatever. Regulation amendment, et cetera. And the reason for that 60 days, as you might guess, is because that's the appeal period. So the appeal period gets to run. So it's the later of either the end of the appeal period or if a petition for review to the Growth Management Hearings Board is filed timely upon issuance of the board's final order. So no more, you know, gotchas on the, the annexations. And there is another statute that has to do with vesting. So you can't, you can't vest before this period, before the effective date. And if the final order of the growth board says that what you did was non-compliant and invalid, then you can't vest until it's fixed. So that's the way it works.
Thank you, Chris. And again, it's, it's a new bill that passed and it's now in effect. And we have shared the bill with our local planning cities. And I don't want to belabor the effort, but the, the, the push for that came out of the practice out of Clark County. Just to be frank. Yep.
Well, we took it to the Court of Appeals a couple of times and took it to the Supreme Court. So it was, it was pretty clearly an issue.
In that, this, this Commissioner Haroun, in that just affects the land that's the resource land or it puts a cloud over the entire expansion? It was just the resource land that that addresses, right? Under a challenge? It's not, it doesn't affect the entirety of the?
Well, not just resource land, but also any urban growth boundary expansion. In the last comprehensive plan update, there were rural lands that were brought into an urban growth boundary. And the Growth Board ruled that that was invalid because the county had no need for those lands. And if the county had a need for those lands or a need for more capacity, the county was also supposed to attempt to do other things besides expand the urban growth boundary. In other words, densify or upzone. So it, it's not just resource. That is often the, the point of friction, the resource lands, but it's not exclusively.
So one, one portion of resource land can, can affect the entire, all of the work on the entire urban growth boundary?
No. But if, if, it, it depends on the ruling, you know, you gotta, you gotta read what they say. They haven't written it yet. So it could affect the entire urban growth boundary if, for example, yeah, I don't know. I can, I can see scenarios where it could affect the whole urban growth boundary. Yes.
And as, as Legal Counsel pointed out, those that are filing the petition, they raise particular issues and those are the issues that are considered in the growth board ruling. If, if the ruling, if the issue that they raise are particular to one particular U G A, that may be the issue that is before the growth board. But everything depends on the issues that are raised in their field. I think it's important to put that out there so that everyone knows. Yep. Any other questions before we continue?
This is Commissioner Baker. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Commissioner.
I had a question in lines with Eldon. So when we're adding these new chapters and we get this, like, we're, we're, as Jose mentioned, we're doing the low hanging fruit right now. But when we get into the things that have a lot of detail and, and have a lot of, it can go one way or the other. And there's a lot of questions involved. Are we going to be able to have some, enough time to go back and forth with some of these chapters? Or is it like, here's the proposal, you can accept it or deny it. And then we're just going to go to council? Or is there, is there a way, is, is there time to, you know, address any concerns?
So Commissioner, this is Chris Cook, and you missed the third option there. You can accept things, you can deny things, or you can amend things. So that's a third option. As to the timing, I will let the planners respond to that part.
Thank, thank you, Chris.
Timing. To be frank with you, this is why we are recommending and the, all the tax force meetings, whether it is the, particularly on the climate, the CAG meeting is open to the public. We encourage the public, as is required by the Growth Management Act, to participate early and often. And we will also have opportunity to publish the draft so that the public will also have opportunity to review that. Because if we can use the climate chapter as a chapter that is new, bear in mind that our focus is to prepare an element that is consistent with what the statute says you have to, you have to do. So through this process, if the tax force believe that the chapter that they are putting out there, including policies and strategies, miss the, the reading of the law, I think it will, in my mind, create no challenges going forward. You know that, yes, as Chris indicated, you can accept it, you can reject it, you can make an amendment. I would suspect that if you make amendment, we will take your recommendation or amendment. I would suspect that if you make amendment, we will take your recommendation or amendment to the council and our staff. Our role is also to make sure that the elements that we are putting forward is consistent with what the statute requires, because in some cases they have criteria, they have requirement and things we have to comply with. For example, if you look at the capital facilities element, there are specified criterias, inventory, needs and so forth. You have to include your capital facilities element. The same is true for the housing element in order, some of this mandated element. Now that climate is mandated, there are criterias that we have to make sure that we followed, as well as the guidelines from the state, in this case, Department of Commerce.
Thank you, Dr. Is there any way to expedite the review of the material to be able to present it to the commission sooner rather than later? That way we can have a little bit more backing? Because I would imagine as these chapter revisions get presented, there'll be some questions from the council, but also from the public and the commission and the council and the public. Like, everybody's going to have questions on it. If we can get that information to us sooner, then we can kind of hash it out without like the timeline just pressing down on us. Is there any possibility of that?
I will say yes. As soon as we receive that, we will share the draft with the public and the Planning Commission. One of my goal in working with a tax force is to see if they can reach consensus. And where they can, we might put our foot down and saying, "This is what the law says", and move forward. But in any case, we would like to, as soon as we get the draft, we will share that with the Planning Commission and the public. And as I indicated earlier, that is why we are coming to the Planning Commission, starting with the low-hanging fruit, as Jose indicated. And as we get into those that may create some challenge, we will provide it as quickly as we can. Because the climate chapter is new and touches other element of the land use plan, it might take longer, but we will walk through the process to provide that information as soon as we have them.
Thank you. I just, I'm just, I know it's going to be a lot, and I just want to make sure that we stay in compliance. And so I just, I appreciate that.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that, you know, it's going to be a lot. There's, Jenna's done a really good job in putting together the information and sharing that, communicating that. We might have multiple work sessions going, getting through that material. And it's an opportunity for you to ask questions and get clarification on what the overall policies are. Having attended some of the meetings, it's, you know, a lot of it is wordsmithing about particular language. And, you know, the thing you need to remember, these are broad policy, broad policy language and goals. And it's, at this point, it's not code. So that's one thing to keep in mind. You'll, we'll have the work sessions, and then we'll have the opportunity to discuss it, and then we'll have the hearings subsequent to that. So it's something you'll be able to live with for a little bit longer, maybe than you think. But yeah, just understanding the discussions that the advisory groups have had and their time spent with it, I think would be beneficial, because they've, they're going to have discussed a lot of the same issues that you're concerned with. And it's sort of where they landed, what they're comfortable, I think, is what we're getting to, the point where they're comfortable and they can live with that particular language. And so, you know, having that accessible, I think, would be beneficial for you as well, that, you know, this is a very broad, diverse cross-section of the county that's involved in this advisory group. So that's all I'd say.
Thank you, Jose.
And yeah, go ahead, Chris.
I also wanted to point out that if you are curious about what is happening with the CAG, you can go to the county website, go to departments, click on Community Planning, and then look at what's there. You know, it talks about, there's a place where you can click on Comprehensive Plan, and there'll be a dropdown that includes stuff like climate planning, among other things on it. And you'll find out what is being discussed at meetings and what they've agreed so far and what they haven't agreed. And so there is a way to get there if you have the time to put into doing that.
It is time-consuming. It is putting you more to work, especially when we do the periodic update. The same is true, well, the same will be true when you look at the new housing element. This is the first time doing this type of work that the legislature have said, from top down, this is what you're supposed to do. We don't have the luxury in some of this anymore, where we have to now plan for housing by various incumbents and providing opportunity for a variety of housing type. What I can say on that is because, you know, monitoring and hearing from my friends at Commerce and monitoring what bill the, anytime the legislature is in session. We started the Housing Study Action Plan early. And with your help and those, some of the folks here in the audience, that work was completed before the bills came out. And I just don't want to take any credit, but we saw that coming because of housing unit shortage in the state. And we knew, I knew also, that the, those that are smarter than us were looking at how many housing unit the state have to produce in order to keep up. They come up with 1 million, and we have a share of that. And we have to plan for it. You know, some are saying, "Well, we're just doing what the state require us to do." That's true. But we have no choice except to comply with the law. Every time the session comes up, you see deals introduced to repeal the GMA, it doesn't pass. And I can assure you that if ever pass, Washingtonians will come up with initiative that will be much stronger than the GMA. But let's move on to the chapters that are before you this evening, unless you have other questions.
Sorry. So this is just a high-level overview of what we are looking at when we're looking at the updating the chapters. We have a checklist that we received from Commerce that identifies all of the legislation that has passed in the intervening periods since the last comprehensive plan updates. And so we are looking at those and how it affects the different elements of the plan. And we have to turn that checklist into Commerce to let them know if we have sufficient code and policy language that addresses those changes. And so that's kind of the first cut that we go through in evaluating the chapters to see if we're in compliance or out of compliance with any new legislation. Some of the policies in our existing comp plan already address legislation that's been recently passed. So there's no really, there's no need to change or update that. And then as we go through, if there's any confusion or there's some clarity that's needed in some existing goal or policy, we'll address that, or if there's any Scrivener's errors. And so those are the types of things you're likely to see in these goals and policies that we'll be reviewing. At some point in the future, we'll also bring the chapters. You know, they're not as, the goals and policy is really the heart of the issue. For example, the housing chapter, there's a lot of demographic data that's nine years old, so we need to update those things, and that's, those are changes that are in the chapters. And so there will be text edits that will be coming. But we wanted to start with the goals and the policies, because those are the, kind of the heart of the issue. So, and we've also reviewed some of these with, shared them with some of our advisory groups and affected departments to get their input, to see if there's any updates that need to be made as part of this. And so that'll be reflected in some of the changes you'll see as well. All right. With that, we can get to the...
Planning Commissioners, again Oliver or Jaco, I will start with the Community Framework Plan Policies. Let me provide a very, just a very quick background. The Community Framework Plan was kind of like a 50-year vision of the county. It was prepared, I believe, and adopted in 1993 before the development of the 20-year comprehensive plan for the county to comply with the Growth Management Act that was passed in 1990. Since we have been updating the comp plan since adoption, this would likely be our fifth, if not our fourth one. Very minor changes have been made to the framework plan. I have been teasing my staff that, or staff in community planning, that the next time we will do this update, that may be the ripe time to check in with the community to see whether the goals and direction as stipulated in the framework plan is still valid or do we? Because when the plan was adopted in 1990, the population of Clark County was only less than 250,000. We have grown to over 500,000. So new folks have moved in. So it might be an opportunity, because it was a 50-year vision, you know, 2045, the next update will be in 2035. So that would be a good timing to check in, to see how well are we developing or are we consistent with the framework plan? And when we started the 2016 or 2015 plan update, there was an effort to check in, but the commissioners at the time, or councillors at the time, didn't buy that. They just said, "It's not yet time to revisit that." And there was no interest, broadly speaking, to engage the public to go over that 50-year visioning. I can't say, because I'm an alternate on the M-TAC, the Metropolitan Technical Advisory Committee, on the south side of the river. They are already beginning to look at their own 2040 plan. I think they completed their 50-year plan or 40-year plan before the county did their 50-year. But having said that, we will, I think the timing to take a check-in will be when we start the next 2035 update. But what and how we structured this to make it really clear and easy to follow is to put this cross tab or table to guide you to know, as Jose indicated, where there are no changes, we just say no changes. Where there are, we identify the intent of why we are proposing a change. I can broadly tell you that there are no changes to the Community Framework Plan. The goals and policies are still intact. If you ask the City of Vancouver, they will tell you that they're developing according to the framework plan. If you ask some other cities, they will tell you also that they are. So they are, we are not proposing any changes to the framework plan. And as I indicated, the policies and the land use, all those are still intact, and we are not proposing to make any changes. So we call it low-hanging fruit. This is one of the chapters where we are not proposing to make any changes until we do the next plan update. We will start early and check in with the community to see whether the visions needs to stay the same or to change. So I will stop there, see if you have any questions. It's easy, this one. Okay. We can go to the next chapter. Is this school? Okay, Amy will take this on. And Amy is one of those chap, staff in my shop. All of them are very intelligent. I'm proud of them. But Amy will go over the school district. And I believe we may have Liam Bremmer on online, but Amy will go through this. If you have questions where we are unable to answer, then we might, why the work session doesn't allow public comment. Liam Bremmer may hear your comment, and Amy might get back with her and see how we can respond to that. But Amy, go ahead.
Thank you, Oliver. Can you hear me? That's better. Okay. Good evening, Planning Commissioners and Commission Chair. For the record, my name is Amy Wooton. I'm a planner with Community Planning. I'm here tonight to discuss with you the changes proposed for Chapter 10 of the Comprehensive Plan, which is the school element. Community planning staff have been working internally and with the school's advisory council on chapter edits since sometime mid-last summer. We began by emailing each member of the SAC and requesting each of the districts provide any chapter edits that, or changes that they would like to see. Several of the SAC members responded with edits. So we revised the document, and based on their feedback, redistributed that document to the SAC members at the fall meeting in December. So what you have before you right now is just that result of that collaboration. We only have a few changes to go over tonight for the schools element. So Jeff, if you could change the slide for me? Great. So the first change is proposed to Policy 10.1.3 on the second page of your packet. The proposed change would add and the verbiage and appropriately designate and zone school properties for school-related uses. This phrasing was suggested by the school districts and is intended to, only to emphasize the land that is already zoned to allow schools. This change is the only county-wide policy change in this particular chapter. So I wanted to mention that it does apply to all of the jurisdictions within Clark County. So after tonight's discussion, we are going to share this requested change with all of the jurisdictions and come back to you with a recommendation of whether... all of the jurisdictions and come back to you with a recommendation of whether to move forward with the change or not to move forward with it. So our next revisions can be found on page three and revise policies 10.2.2 and 10.2.3. The first revision simply corrects the Scrivener's errors, you can see. And then the following changes respond to revised language contained in RCW 3678-213, which was adopted in 2017. Essentially, the legislature expanded the ability for schools to serve both rural and urban students in the rural area by removing the 300-foot barrier of service connection and allowing extension of public facilities and utilities to serve schools sighted in the rural area. Next page. Thank you. And lastly, suggested revisions to Policy 10.3.1 on page four include the removal of verbiage each city. This section of policies only applies to Clark County and is not considered countywide policy. So we just wanted to get rid of that reference. So that concludes the changes to Chapter 10. If you have any questions, feel free to ask and hopefully I'll have an answer, or Oliver and Jose will.
This is Commissioner Haroun. So the it's state, so it's state law that was in 2017 that basically allows schools to locate outside of UGA?
Yes, if it's a school that is going to have student body that enrolls both urban and rural students, but the school district, I believe, and maybe Christine will correct me, but I believe that they will bear the financial responsibility for extension of those utilities.
Sure. And was that, was that originally largely driven by just the, the cost of land for, the cost of land for the school districts to, to locate, or was it not a?
No, no, I think it's more of where they are seeing the need. If they're seeing that the predominant student within their district is coming from the rural area, they can decide to locate a school outside to serve that growing need. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Jose, are you taking this one? Okay.
This is the annexation element, Chapter 12. I think there's one change on the page, is that? Yes. So there was a policy 12.2 that dealt with the Fisher-Swale area. I think at the time this policy was adopted, when we were updating the plan in 2007, it was unclear whether, which jurisdiction was going to have control over this area. And the Fisher-Swale area is generally about 192nd and 14th, and that area is, the issue's been resolved between the both of the jurisdictions and the area's been annexed. So the policy is no longer, no longer needed. So that's why we're proposing to, to delete it. Any questions?
We wait to see if you have questions. The only final comment I will make is that the county is still supporting annexation that have always been county policy. We do encourage the cities to propose annexations that are balanced, but we do support, while I can speak for the county, we do support annexation.
Okay, and the, the final, and we just renumbered when the subsequent policies. Those are the other changes to, once we delete that one, we'll renumber the, the ones that follow. The last item is the Shoreline Master Program. And there's no changes proposed here. The, the master program was worked on in 2022, 2023. We adopted changes to the, the plan March 7th of 2023. And the way this works is that Department of Ecology then has to approve those changes. They approved those changes August 22nd of 2024, and then it went, became effective 14 days after that. So we're, we're in compliance with all of those regulations. There may be changes after the comp plan is adopted, but at this point, there's no need to make any, any changes. And in addition, it's just being an additional process to have these reviewed by Ecology after, after the fact, so. There's no changes needed, and if there are any, they'll be subsequent to the plan, plan adoption.
The only thing I can add, and I say this often when we do particularly Critical Area Ordinance or the Shoreline Master Program, and because of the fact that you see that and the council approves that before we send it to Ecology, I'm always amazed by the work, or level of work that my staff do. And when it's not appealed, we take credit for that. Honestly, we've getting compliment from state departments, be it Ecology, be it other state department, that we are one of the counties that when we did our first update to our Shoreline Master Program, it was done collaboratively with all the local jurisdictions. We put our fund together and updated that, and other counties emulated the process we took, and we were not challenged when we did that. And you saw our Critical Area Ordinance. I am also very optimistic that Ecology will approve that, and I will, that's the last comment I'll be making.
Any questions pertaining to what we just went over? Jack, you look like you want to say something.
I just have a quick question on the school that. When a school is extending utilities to their place, are they required to size those utilities for future development along that pathway?
I would say no. No, but the way that the law is written, I don't think that it encourages that. However, there is, and Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, there is, the language could also be interpreted that if there is any property that wants to connect to that, they will have to be the one paying for so. And working with the service providers or the, in case, assuming it's a city, whether the city would allow that hookup. Because what happens is that when you extend it to this property, the next property may want it, the next property may want it, so there's always a caveat that you have to be, the, the conditions for you to extend it is not that easy.
Yeah, I assume you're talking about sewer? But, yeah.
Sewer water, yeah.
Sewer is general, so water is water is controlled by the PUD, right? Sewer is controlled by Clark Regional. But sewer is considered an urban service. And GMA disfavors urban services in the rural area. So when a school cites in the rural area to serve both urban and rural children, it, it can connect, but it's got to pay for it. You know, the state, state doesn't pay for it, the county isn't going to pay for it. You can bet Clark Regional will not want to raise the rates on all of its customers for them to pay for it. But so that's kind of a limit right there on how far outside the normal area, which is the urban area, I think the sewer is going to go, because it's just not practical from a financial standpoint. And yeah, it could be made practical if you let everybody in the rural area connect to it and they would all pay for the whole thing. But that's not what GMA wants. So that, that is absolutely not something that is encouraged.
Thank you, Chris, and I know that I think there's a requirement by Commerce to monitor how many school districts have taken advantage of that, so that we can also report if there were any additional hookups. So when I get that report, I always say no, because no city, no school district in Clark County have utilized that.
So, so I had one question on the schools. Does this policy apply to public and private schools? Because it's, the way it's written, it almost looks like it just applies to public schools.
We are working with all the nine school districts in Clark County. We, we never really deprive where private school are allowed to be located, we haven't denied the application.
Okay.
I think in the code, the reference also is to the school district, so, which would imply that.
Well, I said it applies public.
Yes.
So, okay.
I don't think OSPI distinguishes the difference between public and private schools. I think they call them the same. Now, I understand somebody trying to go out and put up "school," air quotes, is not what it is, but I would think that the heart and the spirit of the law is, I'm trying to think of a school that would even do that, because if we look at our North County, part of the law, I think, says based on the need and can you put that in the school district that already has the bus services and everything else with it? So I, I understand what you're saying, but I believe the way OSPI, who would probably be the one to say whether you're a school or not, is public-private. Just my thoughts.
So Planning Commissioners, that's all we have this evening. We will be coming with other chapters for you to review. And as I said earlier, reach out to me, reach out to individual staff who are working on the chapters. Any questions that you may have, we will be more than willing to respond and provide clarifications.
I just wanted to comment, I like the way you've laid this out with the proposed amendments next to the actual code language and the rationale behind it. That's really helpful for me and, and just getting a quick handle on what's going on, so thanks. Really good format.
I was going to say, you, you kind of went backwards to the paper too, and I know we can't, we're trying to save trees, but I liked it. I mean, I was like, okay, and it was much easier to see where you were at. I understand we can't do that every time. No, I don't want binders shipped to my house anymore, because I still might have a few there. But if you're, we, they used to literally FedEx to our house, binders, but I, I want to tell you, it was just nice to see this visually, and it was, at least for me, it was better, so, thank you. Is there anything else for the, the good of the order? I encourage you to look at the state laws coming down, this is, oh, sorry, Oliver, go, sorry.
Yeah. I know you are aware that there is a vacancy on the Planning Commission ward from upstairs is that the councilors will be conducting their interview for that vacancy on February 25th. So stay tuned, it's likely that they may make a recommendation on that same day, so we'll know who the new Planning Commission members that will be joining you. That's all I have to add, and Happy New Year to every one of you. The other thing I would like to add is, you know, we are doing work sessions, and I know what your bylaw says about appointing a new chair at your first hearing of the year, but you're not going to have any. So Carl will, well, you won't have any until a very long time. This is all work sessions, so Carl, you are the chair until you have your first hearing, which may be in October. But your call, if you want me to change, if you want me to change your bylaws, but we got to go through this Planning Commission work sessions first before we have your hearing. I'm open to your suggestion, but I want to put it out there, Carl, you are the, you're still the chair until we have your first hearing.
I am, I am fine to hold, hold the gavel, but I, at the same time, I always would say it was good practice for others, and I appreciate Brian stepping in through the last year, and, and I think that's good to always have someone that can step in, and believe it or not, a third person, because I think with Ron Barker, we had that happen a couple of times where two of us were gone and then. So it's, it's not bad to share it, so I, I'm, for now, I, I say, I don't, I don't know if we're going to meet again, but if somebody is interested in taking over this position, that would be fine by me, but at the same time, I'm, I'm fine holding on to it.
Right, we couldn't change till October, so you're stuck for 10 months.
One, one other thing I wanted to add was, there, I was reading the Columbia, and which I really do, but I was reading it, and just the stuff that's coming down the pike with ADUs. And I know that we had talked, you know, we, it sounded like we kind of got ahead of that, like we, we were ahead again, like, oh, here we are. We, we've, maybe there's more work to do that I don't understand, but I think there's like three or four laws that are pending at the legislative level for ideas for housing, and, and one of them was how would, how they're dealing with rural ADUs and all these things that we had kind of dealt with in the past, so. I thought that was kind of cool that we were maybe either at the forefront, or at least had been dealing with that prior to that.
Yeah, you're correct. There is new bill introduced this year, which I'm also monitoring, and that new bill on talks about allowing ADU in the rural area as detached. Currently, we have it as attached in the rural area. There's also another provision in the new bill that says you can now have up to four to six lots in the rural centers, which the, is known as lamarid or limited area of more intensive development. And here in Clark County, we treat that as our rural centers. I don't know whether the bill is going to pass or not, but there are some counties on the eastern side of the, of the state that would like that, because a, a city is very far from where they are, and some of their rural centers or lamarid may have sewer. I can say that beside Hawkinson, where a sewer line was run to serve the high school for health reasons, none of our rural centers has sewer, for example. Meadowglade has, but it's a step system, so it's, it's, it's very limited. So, but we will take a look at that bill if it passes to see where those type of provisions can be made. So stay tuned. Last year, a similar bill was introduced to allow for detached ADU, it didn't pass in the rural area, now it is introduced again with this provision to allow for more intensive development or housing, all of this is in the name of providing additional housing, which is, which is essential, but it comes with other implications. We are not opposed to the bill, but I just know that that bill is introduced in this new legislation. If it passes, we will come back and write our code to comply. So that's all we have. Thank you.
Okay, Brian said enough's enough.
We'll, we'll see you in two weeks.
We'll see you in two weeks. All right, not October. Okay, sorry. Another work session. Thank you, and thank you again.